All right, so we're going to call the order. Damon, here.
Here.
Kimberly, here.
Jeff.
Here.
Rob.
Here.
I am also here. Can you use the probably notes and certified?
Yes.
All right, let's stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, the law to read, Michelle State.
Sure. The Montmorever area school district in partnership with the community is dedicated to nurturing, educating, and challenging our students, preparing and empowering them to be productive, responsible, and self-fulfilling members of society.
Thank you. All right, 2A, approval of the presented revised agenda. Second. Motion for Jeff. Seconded by Kimberly, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, to B, approval of October 1st, 2018, regular minutes.
Second.
Seconded by Kimberly, seconded by Rob. All of the favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Jeff, let's take it. All right. Let's move forward. Are we ready to create, right?
Unfortunately, Ms. Sheeblers' husband was not feeling well tonight, so we'd like if it's okay to postpone that until maybe the second meeting.
All right, so 3B's, names.
Just saying, good to be bad. You know, I've been here for a while, so I actually wrote this up down this time, so all professional. So, things to talk about, um, I'm pretty sure October 23rd was the end of the first quarter. We're forcefully done. And, um, so I'll just start off kind of from the list and go down. So upcoming art events, um, Tuesday, October 23rd, all students that were interested in visual art classics had, uh, classic had a meeting in the art room. And then also on Tuesday, uh, Tuesday, October 30th, all students interested in visioneers will have meetings, so visioneers are starting up. And then, uh, student rotearians, I hope I said that right?
You did.
Yeah, okay. Were chosen, um, I don't know exactly when, and, um, so basically, if you guys are looking, the Rotary Club does, it like gets businesses together and so pretty much supports the community in every way possible that they can, so each month, two of the students, the many students that were picked will be, uh, assigned, uh, to attend the Rotary meetings each Wednesday at the Grand Beach Hall. And then, uh, Spanish club raised fourteen, um, oh, excuse me, fourteen hundred dollars for their pulsera or their bracelet project, and that is going towards the support education and well-being in Central America for people that are less fortunate. And then also, um, state honors students were represented, uh, Montmore High School, state honors students were represented at the Wisconsin Honors Music Project Concerts, and that includes state honor band members, orchestra, and choir at the Overture Center. And, um, if you guys don't know what, um, the state honors, um, people are for band and music arts, it's, um, so each year, uh, 2,000 auditions, 2,000 high schools audition for their place, so the students that are in, um, they're very lucky to be in, and they've worked very hard to get to where they are. Also, um, the musical is coming up, The Music Man, um, don't know if you all have bought your tickets yet, but coming up soon, um, they're starting to finally, um, incorporate all of the acts, the other, all the, the stage crew, the, um, the pit, and the actors themselves, so that's coming up very shortly. Sports, football is still going along, so it's been a long, we haven't been here for a while. If we win this game against Catherine Memorial this Friday, then we are in the semifinals. And then also, winter sports are starting very shortly. Uh, basketball just had their meeting with, in Mueller's room, I believe, today. And then also, um, winter sports are starting, yeah. Um, and then also, on top of that, um, a new, uh, chapter for Skills USA was, I guess, founded, so we have, um, all of our stuff scheduled, and, and we're also wondering, so the, I'll just tell you a little bit about Skills USA, so Skills USA is, um, getting the community to support students that are, um, trying to find kind of like their passion, because it goes more than beyond the technology, like the tech ed side of things, it goes to soft skills as well, and all culinary, I think that's kind of cool. And, um, so we have, um, we were also wondering, so I'm part of Skills USA, I'm the vice president, and I was wondering if you guys would be interested in us presenting something to you, and to have, um, like, because we have a lot of places to go, and we're like, we have to get a board's approval by that, so if we're wondering if you could come sometime in the near future, talk about what we are, who we are, and what we want from you. And I believe that is it.
So, if there's a minimal reward, man, President, if I could add Skills USA into our future agenda topics, would that be okay?
I just wrote it down.
Talking a little fast there. Great report. Joey, can you tell everybody about the leadership conference you and a couple of students attended a few weeks ago?
So, yeah, so, a couple of weeks ago, me and a couple of students had the great honor of going with Dr. Slaro to a leadership conference in, um, Wannick, at Wannick High School on Sunday, um, October 14th, I believe, yeah. And we pretty much got to spend the day learning about many different things that, um, many different leadership things. I, um, pretty much got broken up into groups, and depending on what, like, leadership roles you had at your school there, you would go to them. And I went into the student representative section, and I actually brought a piece, I actually gained some knowledge that I would, uh, I was interested, if you guys would be interested in, instead of just also learning about high school news, going down from, to middle school, to the PC, early learning center, stuff like that, or as low as you guys want some of them. Because I was thinking, it's not only, uh, Montmore High School that I'm trying to represent, it's the Montmore district, so I was thinking, that would be something you guys would be interested in, hearing about, just a little piece, so.
Thanks to you and your classmates for attending that event, it really, we learned a great deal. In fact, it was spotlighted in the WSB school news journal, and that's how we came to learn about it, so that's outstanding. Joey, appreciate your leadership.
Thank you.
Hey, we're so thankful to have Joey on the board, we're also excited to have Jeff Hannah back. Hi Jeff, how are you doing? We missed you around here.
Better.
You look great.
I'm better.
You look great, welcome back. And, um, wanted to just share a couple of items that maybe would be reflective of some of those younger grades. On Thursday night, in Ms. Indem's class and Mr. Nichols' class, we're having a kindergarten STEM night. Uh, you can never start science, technology, engineering, and mathematics too soon. Both of these fine professionals are obtaining their master's degree, and this is kind of a capstone activity that they're doing, uh, for their, for their studies, so we wish them well. Uh, and then, a, a really neat opportunity, I think, in the community, maybe, Danny, you want to speak to this, has to do with the community book reading that's coming up. Would you want to say anything about that, or?
Sure. Um, so this is being put on by the Montmore Mental Health and Wellness Coalition. Um, one of the initiatives that we collectively came up with was to do, um, uh, there we go, there's the flyer, um, to do a book discussion group, um, you know, selecting a book that has mental health as a, um, a topic or subject. And so, um, it's going to be December 4th at the library, starting at 6:30 and going until about 8:00. The book we're going to be reading is Silver Linings Playbook by Matthew Quick. And, um, they have copies set aside at the library for anybody who wants to participate, um, to check them out. And this beautiful, beautiful flyer was put together by one of our high school students, Lydia, what is her last name?
Cruz.
Cruz. And, uh, so you will start seeing this posted here and there about town here shortly.
Keep reading for the calendar, so while we're talking about this, I better put it in.
I could give you one more update if you're still in mind.
Yes.
Infinite Campus has just recently updated their, um, app, you were telling me about this.
It's amazing.
You, you want to talk about that?
Yes, so the old app, you have to refresh every time you went into it to see the most recent grades, and you don't have to do that now, it's, it runs more like the website, and it still sends you updates if you sign up for them to get like, when your kids turn in grades, or, um, if they miss a class, all of that, but it's more in real time. So, it's much better, and they have a student version and a parent version, I don't know what the difference is, because my kids can't remember their passwords and stuff, so they're usually using the parent version, but, um, it's so much better than the old version. It was broken for like two days, though, you push it and you just get a white screen, and I messaged them, and they were like, yeah, we know, and the next day there was an update, and now it's all better. But, let's go.
And I wanted to pass along these, please, they're just absolutely beautiful. Mrs. Prent's, uh, class, she has some students who created some messages for the Board of Education in honor of Board Appreciation Week. Is that just too fresh?
It's for his destiny.
So, feel free to look through those.
Any other school news? All right, moving on to 3C, citizens' comments. All right, moving on to 4A, personnel transactions.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Seconded by Rob. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, time she carries. Moving on to 5, consent agenda. Motion to review consent agenda. Seconded by Kimberly.
Second.
Seconded by Rob, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Right? Yes.
Is that, do you agree with getting online tonight?
No. I'm struggling.
My assistator?
Yes. Take just a second, I gave up, but mine's. There are so many of them, I can never remember which one it is, and.
Damon, how are you doing?
Magically, it worked on a hot cry, and I.
Don't touch that, don't touch this.
I'm just going to sit here quiet.
Exactly, I think that's right.
What did you do?
How are you?
Sometimes you just need someone else to come standby, and then it's like, I should work now, someone else is here. Thank you. All right, moving on to 6A, report from October 23rd, WSB Fall Regional Meeting and Workshop, myself and Ms. Taylor. You want to go first?
I typed up notes, so if there's something, would you like to go first?
Sure, I did type, I did, I typed up notes.
Okay, you go.
I was like, she's going to be so impressed, I actually typed up notes. I texted Mickey through the whole thing, and he said, what are these random texts? I'm like, they're my notes, but I couldn't get, couldn't get Google access to open. All right, so, um, it was very nice to meet at dinner, and we got awards, as you can see there, pretty awards that are, you get points for going and stuff, and then maybe go certificate, pin, and, um, so we talked a lot about the, the blue ribbon, um, group, I don't know what they're actually called, they, um, gave a lot of recommendations, um, to our legislator, legislators, um, those included increased special ed funding, um, so that we could start moving money from our general fund to our special ed fund, and I think you told me that roughly like $2 million we moved, which is astronomical, and their, their request was to increase that 33%. Don't know if they had a reason why they came up with 33%, but, um, they also want to put more money into early childhood, um, and one of the things that people would want, obviously, is predictable funding, so there was talk about somehow maybe tying it to CPI or something, so we can know kind of what our funds are going to be, so it's not this dark board of what we're going to, what we're going to get. Um, they're also working on increasing sparsity aid, um, expanding high transportation aid, expanding broadband, um, and mental health funding, which, you know, we need desperately. Um, they also talked about the different campaign processes from both candidates, they sent out a questionnaire, and kind of how they both answered, um, because it was the WSB questionnaire, a lot of it was focused towards education. Um, and then John Ashley talked about the upcoming convention, actually read part of the original charter from WSB, and shockingly, and all of their goals are the same goals we still have now, and we're coming up, it'll be the 100th year convention in two years. So, a lot of the same stuff. Um, they're also looking for ways to increase participation at Region 12 meetings, um, the idea should be sent to town weather, he's, uh, he replaced, um, Nancy as our, our rep, um, you know, it, it's in, it was in Manona this time, I don't think they always have it in Manona, though.
Yeah, it was in Stoughton, wasn't it?
Yeah, so like, for us, in the grand scheme of things, it's like a three-hour meeting, an hour both ways, I mean, so it's, kind of anywhere they have it, I think, makes it a little easier, I did tell them that. But, our, I looked at what our region is, our region is the weirdest shaped region, it's like not Dade County, it's like weird this way, all the way down to the border. I don't know whose I know, but, and I'm sure you have lots more to add.
Just a little bit, good job with the notes, it was nice. Um, so I wanted to touch that, Dan Ross Miller in Florida, Joey's education, we have Wasby, he was here from the Wisconsin Association of School Boards, um, we have a government relations director, so Wasby actually had lobbies for certain laws and policies and funded to happen, so he's kind of, the guy who keeps track of everything that's happening at the state level. He made the observation that this is the first gubernatorial election that he's ever recalled where both of the candidates are campaigning on public education, uh, so that's going to be a benefit for us, right? Um, he also tied that data, um, into the Marquette University Law Poll, which he, uh, highlights quite often at these regional meetings, and that poll, you get sort of a sense of what the board's top priorities are for the, whatever election that we're looking at. Um, and so for this one, number one came in as jobs and economy, which is often the case, but number two was K through 12 education, where he said that's typically around like the 10th spot. Um, and even left run over, um, health coverage, which was three, and often that takes the second spot. So, there seems to be a shift in the board's perspective right now, is what he's noticed, and John Ashley may know that as well. Um, we already outlined Wasby's top budget priorities, but piggybacking on that special education category, categorical aid request, um, so that has not increased since the 2008, 2009 budget cycle, so I wouldn't be surprised if the space stagnant too much longer, so that's great. Um, lots of positivity with all those categorical aids, hoping for more. And then, of course, the plug, January convention, um, Mr. Ashley highlighted that student equity would be a top focus, as well as continuing to push for more attention to early travel to resources, mental health packages, and also, he said, keeping technology robust in schools. So it's good evening, good networking, lots of chace, school board members, we have a new president, so it's been like a good shift, and thanks for letting me and I attend.
And it wasn't, I mean, it wasn't dry, um, so I would recommend, I would go again, it wasn't like I was done, and I was like, well, that was a waste of my evening, I felt that it was really informational. At first I was like, oh, what are we going to talk about? And then once they start talking, because I was like, hmm, this is all really interesting, hopefully a lot of it, like, the whole, like, tying stuff to CPI and stuff, at least having some idea of what's going to come in the budget would be, I don't know, a lot, you know, I don't do financial stuff, but I figure that, that's better than guessing.
Did they talk about any other legislation, like proposed, I don't know where it's at now, legislation about wording the rest of it in the future, did they touch on that?
They didn't touch on, you know, we mostly just, you know, November 6th election.
They did mention that the astronomical amount.
Nothing about changing them.
Since then, though, Dewey Sterbo, who originally sponsored that language at the last legislative session, has said that he would bring this back for consideration, which could have an impact on school districts throughout the state.
Any other questions?
Thanks for coming with me, guys.
Yeah.
Thanks for coming with us, it's an administrative, that's great.
Yeah. All right, 6B, scheduling open house times for board members. And this was for us to go to schools?
Yeah. You may remember board members that last year, um, we had a great opportunity for board members, each of us have our own kind of, of connection to a school level, um, and an opportunity to just avail themselves, check in, say hello, and, and, I know that this was a topic people with, wanted to have that, I believe, and they get.
We did it last year, I went to a couple, I didn't make it to all the schools in the timeframe, but I wandered the halls, and people were like, hey, come talk to me, I'm like, yes, come talk to you, what do you want to talk about, I'm here, let's talk.
Well, speaking of Diana, she was hoping it would be at least, uh, once in the fall, once in the spring, if people, an opportunity perhaps on different days.
Yeah, and I don't know, probably not, maybe still this, like, before December, I don't know.
I would think so.
I have no schedule, it looks like, but.
Yeah, avoid exam times, parent teacher conference times. We have a good time. This semester.
So, everybody liked the idea, like, I think what you did last time was just say, open house, different buildings, for different times, and.
Yeah, if you want to send me, I think what we did last time was the, to board, said these are dates that work for me, and then from there, we said, uh, then, uh, maybe we did like a 9 to 11 a.m. Maybe I did like a meeting wizard with the board, and found out what, post a couple of dates that are, and you are administrator from the building to, um, we could, I don't know, make that happen.
Yeah.
How do you want to do, if you can't get to all the buildings that time, how, or we, I don't know how we did that, or?
I think.
Do it just by our liaison.
We just went to the ones we had an interest in. Like, I went to the one that I typically am in the least of all time.
Yeah, and I, I went to the high school, I feel like I went to another building. Um, but, yeah, I think it was just whatever, whatever kind of worked for everybody that day.
Well, that is the next step, I put together a meeting wizard, and send it out to the board, and then, um, we'll find the date that works best for everybody, and we can schedule some time space for them, and we'll notice it.
Right.
Yeah. Thanks for your continued interest in our school.
Yeah. All right, moving on to 6C, third Friday update, Mr. DeYoung.
So you have a, he should have a spreadsheet, um, that Dr. Slaro will pull up on the screen. Um, there's two tables here, thank you so much, Jackie, for organizing this, so I have to admit, while I'm the one speaking on it, um, Jackie Brager did a lot of the work behind the scenes, so thank you so much, Jackie. Um, the table at the top, um, deals with our student headcount, and for those of you that are on the finance committee, or have been in discussions in previous years about revenue limits, you'll understand that the table at the bottom has to do with our third Friday count relative to, um, adjustment for open enrollment. Um, and so, if the question is, you know, how many students are we educating in our district as of the third Friday count in September, um, we look at that top table, and that's 2,540 students. Um, on the bottom, like I said, we're counting the number of students that attend public education, but not necessarily here in Mount Or, it could be Mount Or or any open enrollment house students. So from a third Friday count perspective, the bottom table, um, is the one we use, and that total is 2,461. Um, one thing, as you know, that's always interesting, is to do a comparison of where we were a year ago, to find out if we're, um, increasing or decreasing on the revenue limit. Um, as compared to the revenue limit, third Friday count a year ago, um, we went down a total of six students. Um, when you compare a old three-year average to the new three-year average, which, um, again, if we've, if you've been involved in revenue limit, um, discussions in the past on the finance committee, um, it's important to compare our, our new three-year average to our old three-year average, and when we draw that comparison, we drop by a total of three students. So, relatively speaking, we're fairly stable, which is absolutely remarkable in terms of what the long-term revenue limit would look like. For districts that are significantly declining enrollment, and you take a three-year average into account, that's a significant challenge from them, for them, from a budgetary perspective. So overall, fairly stable, down just slightly from a year ago.
And this is especially important, because we just graduated our largest senior class, so to be able to recover that many students, uh, really is, is very helpful.
So our third Friday count does not include students who are not residents but are choosing to come to school here.
Correct.
But we do get to count students who live here but don't go to school there.
Correct. So, um, two things happened with that, on the revenue limit, which is the third Friday count we talked about, we count all of the students that reside in our district, not necessarily just attend Mount Or schools. Um, our aid, um, at the end of our fiscal year, gets adjusted by the amount of open enrolled kids coming in, as part of those revenues, compared to the open enrolled kids coming out, or, um, looked at as an expense. So where we benefit tremendously as a district is because we do so well, we're so attractive for many families, our open enrollment ins are significantly higher than our open enrollment house, and that's a, that's a, um, that's a significant benefit for us financially. Interesting rules for counting kids, I totally understand.
But I suppose in a way it makes sense, because if you, if you did count out of district kids who came to school here in your third Friday count, then that would be used to calculate your three-year average, and that could fluctuate, or it could work against you when you're three-year average, so it's kind of, it's probably better to not count them, and then if you get them, just add on that, that aid. It might actually be one thing that makes sense for the state. It just, it seems backwards at first.
Any questions? Thank you. All right, moving on to 7A, we have a lot of second readings, we'll start with the first one, sexual harassment policy, 512.
And this was, this brought back because we didn't have.
We didn't have a full board, correct.
Motion to approve.
Second. And noted by Damon, seconded by Kimberly, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, policy passes. Policy two, drug-free workplace, policy five-two-two-point-one.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Rob, seconded by Jeff, any discussion on this one? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, policy passes, moving on to the third one, review of policies documents related to the board's nine seventeen eighteen WSB workshop, move order, policy one eighty-one. This was to change the Robert's Rules of Order to be, we shall use them as a guideline, so I'm not the grand proba of Robert's Rules.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Rob, seconded by Jeff, any discussion on this one? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, moving on to public participation at board meetings, policy one eighty-seven.
Excuse me, President, this policy, the administration had made no recommendations based upon Attorney Butler's comments, and so, we were just presenting that for purposes of revision, and of course, if there's any additions or subtractions that we wish to make, we'd be open to hearing those. At our last meeting, we didn't, we didn't have any of that. Just wanted to provide that opportunity one more time. If the board is inclined to accept it as it's presented, then what we'll do is we'll just put down revision along the bottom line of the visit, fifth line.
So this wasn't presented at the last meeting?
It was, um, and, uh, what was discussed was, this was one of the policies that Bob Butler had suggested we review as a board, um, and, uh, when we did that, there were those suggestions, and that, and that's okay, it doesn't have to have suggestions for changes, um, boards typically do that, and then along the bottom, they would just simply say that they, they review the policy on, on a certain date, um, and you'll see many of your policies have that, and kind of the board pulls together, reviews those documents.
Is, I just got a really quick question, is the authority for recognizing members granted solely to the president, or is it to the presiding officer?
It would be to whoever's presiding over the meeting.
Yeah. Would you like to change that?
That, that's not what it says.
Right, it says.
So I, I think presiding officer would be more appropriate.
You're talking in the citizens' comments?
In section two.
Since we updated the other policies to specify. Since we updated the other policies to specify, you know, president or the committee, I think, all of them. All right, any other?
So, does that mean we have to come back, or could we, could we pass this as amended?
We could pass it.
Okay. Motion to approve as amended.
Second. Motion by Rad, seconded by Damon, any other discussion?
How it says, presentation, so they limited to 20 minutes? What about citizen comments, should we have a tablet on that, or is it not specified, is specified in...
Is it in a different document, or are we specifying?
It's in this one, into...
Yeah, it does say, it does say, maybe limited to three minutes, depends on time constraints, so whether...
Oh, the very last one.
...guideline there, the flexibility, or...
Okay.
Which, seems consistent with how we...
But, yeah. All right, so, motion by Rad, seconded by Damon, any more discussion? All of the favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, last, and not least, Board of Education's Law Convention brochure. That's been updated, it's new information. You guys sent in your grammatical fixes. All right, do we have a motion to approve it?
Sweet, just to summarize there, if you look at second page, the first and second columns, we had some redundancies that we sorted out which section it went in, right? It was on the bottom left, participant responsibility, and in the middle, middle column on the top, there was board responsibilities.
Motion to approve. Motion by Danny.
Second.
Seconded by Rad, any discussion? All of the favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, these are all of our policies. Moving on to B, consideration of course revisions, British literature.
Board members, this is more out of a conversation that occurred at the Education Committee on a couple of recent meetings, and the idea really is to just expand the scope of the shape curriculum into one of the British literature. The cost to do so, there would be some additional costs in terms of the purchase of textbooks recite, replacement cycle, but that they believe we can, we can do that within our current budget. And this comes at the request of the English Department, if you're not just the teacher department.
And Education reviewed it, and had a 10-1.
Can you help us remember what my concerns were about being consistent with what teachers are requesting? Was, did she mention, like, a range of funds, like, maybe if we didn't know how much something was gonna cost, do we even go in there, or do we ask for a range? Did she have some comments about that, if I'm remembering correctly?
You're dragging my memory, I'm gonna have to check.
It looks like the cost, though, isn't very high.
No, it's not. She was just wondering if, if it would, if we were asking, you know, before being consistent with our instructors when they're proposing their courses.
And that's why we sent it back with, asking for members in there before, and it just, it mentioned that there would be tax, but not even estimates.
That's right.
And we wanted to be consistent, because in others, we get asked for an actual dollar. That's very similar.
The, the number four, general information, it talks about 10 to 12 students? Those are grade levels. Two grade levels, okay. All right, that's, that's good. We won't be offered that 10 to 12 students.
We have a motion to approve. Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Kimberly, seconded by Rad, any discussion?
So, what, oh...
No.
Okay, when it talks about, of course, to be needed or revised with the doctrine of this course, Shakespeare, like, that's, it's in sort of general need, is I mean, there's no more Shakespeare, or it's working, like, this one's replacing that, replacing Shakespeare.
It'll be like a Shakespeare unit.
Shakespeare unit with him.
But it won't be 100% Shakespeare, it'll be less.
I don't want all Shakespeare.
I want my little Shakespeare thrown in there, but all Shakespeare, I don't know if I can take that.
And B...
You know how I feel.
I love it.
So, we have a motion by Kimberly, seconded by Rad, all of the favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, review of the budget levy, state aid, equalized value, and fund equity amounts.
This is our headline tonight, folks. If I were here, having our meeting today, October 29th, and so, we have three items for the board's consideration, and I'm so thankful that we have our Assistant Superintendent of Business and Finance, Scott DeYoung, who's helped shepherd us throughout this process. Scott, can you help lead us off here, please?
Sure. So, the, thank you, first of all, for being flexible with your schedule, and allowing us, as Dr. Slano said, to be meeting at the end of October rather than October 15. So, as you know, annually, at the end of October is when we have the opportunity to find out official state aid amounts from DPI. That allows us to, in return, then reflect on that and calculate our official tax levy for the current school year. So, there are two different documents. The one item is up on the screen, and you may recognize these, the format of these motions, similar to previous years, there's a series of three motions. The Finance Committee talked about the motions in detail, equally talked about, Dr. Slano just had up, our budget revisions that we're looking to make for this evening. So, you may recall, the timeline is, we were diligently on the budget throughout the spring. The board adopted a budget to bring to the annual meeting in August. There's a few important variables, such as the Third Friday count in September, that we use as a projection, because we don't have that official count at the time of the annual meeting. Also, October 15th, we find out how much official state aid we're getting from DPI, and like I said, that allows us to then put the final revisions on the budget. So, the budget that's been adopted is the budget that we're working off of, the budget revisions that are up on the screen reflect any adjustments that need to be made now that we're about a third into our fiscal year. The vast majority of the changes have to do with the adjustments that are needed in our, in our tax levy, the amount of state funding that we'll be receiving, both in state aid, as well as grant allocations. You might recall, very simple example, we received two safety grants over the last couple of months. We need to recognize those grants now in the budget, so that's an exciting adjustment to make. And then, of course, any student needs that are determined in the first couple of months of the school year, we need to make those adjustments as well. So, a lot of the Finance Committee did go through line by line and talk about these adjustments, I'm more than happy to go line by line, I'm more than happy to answer any questions that there might be relating to the three motions, which is the item that you'll see in board acts on the, kind of on the main screen.
Do you have any questions? Do I have to read each one of these motions? There's a lot of zeros and dollars in here.
We should, just for purposes of completeness.
All right, I'm good, I got it up here. All right, oh, nope, I did something.
So, we're looking for someone to actually make that motion?
Yep.
I think they'd be so inclined to approve the budget adjustments.
We've gotta do the first one, so the first one is for...
Well, yeah, for that one.
Yeah, okay. Okay.
I'll second that, 36 million.
Okay, here we go. Jeff moved, and Kimberly seconded, a motion approving the 2018-19 revenue budget totaling 36,400, whatever, expenditure budget totaling 61,394,960, including all funds. The difference in revenues and expenditures include items such as Fund 39, tax levy receipts calendar year, and expenditures fiscal year, and the Fund 49 receives referendum interest and expenditures referendum project. We're going to do a roll call vote. Danny?
Yes.
Damon?
Yes.
Kimberly?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Rad?
Yes.
And also, yes. Phew, all right.
I'll make a motion to approve the district levy, and then on the 13 million.
I'll second that.
All right. We have a motion by Kimberly, Kimberly moved, and Jeff seconded, a motion approving the Mount Ork area school district levy in the amount of 13,381,354, and property, or in taxes against the property of said district to meet the approved budget for the 2018-19 school year. This tax levy is 721,712, lower than the 1718 tax levy, which totaled 14,103,066 dollars. This tax levy is allocated at a mill rate of $9.45 per thousand dollars of equalized value, compared to a mill rate of 10.47 per thousand dollars of equalized value for 2018. Information at the annual meeting, district projected a mill rate of $9.92 per hundred, for per thousand dollars of equalized value.
And President, if I might just make for notice of just one comment, taxpayers will see about a $1.02 reduction in their mill rate per $1,000 of equalized value. Scott, if I remember right, that puts us somewhere in the neighborhood of where we were even before the referendum, is that right?
Wow, it's amazing.
We saw an increase of 5.1% in our equalized value from last year to this year. That's significant, the state average was about 4%, so we saw, you know, just over a 1% increase above the state average.
That's awesome.
I'm sorry, we didn't...
No, that's good information to have, though. All right, roll call vote, Danny?
Yes.
Damon?
Yes.
Kimberly?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Rad?
Yes.
And also, yes. Yay, budget.
Thank you, board members.
We need to approve the budget adjustments, too?
Oh, you did that.
That's, that's all in it.
Okay. And thank you, board members, you positioned this community very, very well financially in terms of that, that fund balance. Many school districts have to catch low borrow, which is paying the money to borrow money in interest, just to make payable, and we, thanks to your efforts, are now one of those districts, and so, kudos to you, this is your good news for the community of Mount Ork. Appreciate you, appreciate you.
All right, moving on to eight, citizens' comments. See none. We have a list of future agenda items. If anyone's anything added, let us know. Schedule of next readings. Don't forget, we have a special hearing on the 19th, at 4:30, is that near the district office?
Yes.
So, I will not be here.
And I'll continue to keep the board apprised of any developments that we have. I plan on meeting with that individual on Wednesday at 11:00, and hope she has something positive to report.
So, you'll be gone for the next one. Okay, good to move, I wrote it down. All right, moving on to 11, post-session. Competing post-session, for section 1985, grant one, M. grant, E. M. grant, Wisconsin statute, for deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public property, giving access to public funds, or conducting other specified public business, wherever competitive or bargaining reasons require post-session, and section 1985, grant one, M. grant, F. M. grant, the Wisconsin statute, for considering financial, medical, social, or personal histories, or disciplinary data of specific persons, primarily consideration, prim, yeah, of specific personnel crimes, or the investigation of charges against specific persons, except where paragraph B applies, which, if addressed in public, would be likely to have substantial adverse effects upon the reputation of any person referenced to in such histories or data, or involved in such problems or investigations. Roll call. Danny?
Yes.
Oh, sorry, yes, your motion by Jeff?
Second.
Seconded by Damon. Okay, now I'll do a roll call. Danny?
Yes.
Damon?
Yes.
Kimberly?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Rad?
Yes.
And also, yes, let's take that.